Before we have the pledge, I'd like to all stand for a moment of silence in memorance of September 11th. Say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk?
Counselor Gerlach?
Present.
Counselor Shabbat?
Present.
Counselor Lambert?
Present.
Counselor Roderick?
Present.
Counselor DiMederos?
Present.
Counselor Pelletier is absent, and Counselor Rutter is absent.
Okay, the consent agenda. Approval of minutes of regular council meeting, August 26, 2013. Approval of executive session minutes, August 26, 2013. Receipt of minutes from the following boards and commissions: Historic Preservation Advisory Board, Waste Water Management Commission, Planning Board Two. Correspondence received and filed, received from Rebecca Elwell, Coordinator of Tiverton Prevention Coalition, seeking volunteers. Attorney Brian Kuna referred to the Interlocal Trust, claims Mauricio Carrera and Mederos. Approval of tax successor abatements. Kate Micho, Planning Board Administrative Officer, report of activities for August. Denise Serot, monthly budget and revenue reports for July. August monthly department report. Are there any omissions or deletions or holes?
Mr. President, I'd like to take CA-7 out, please.
CA-7, okay. Anyone else? Okay, I will entertain a motion for the rest of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor. Okay, Mr. Gerlach?
This is just a quick question. I know where -- sorry. Really, this is 30 seconds. I know we're heading -- well, first of all, thank you for the new reports.
Oh, you're welcome.
Those look really great. I just know we have our special meeting with the Budget Committee on the 12th. I didn't know if there was anything very early, we're only a month into the new fiscal year, anything worth noting to the council ahead of the session on the 12th with the Budget Committee. I don't know if there's anything egregious at this point, but just --
No.
That's what I figured, but I just wanted to ask, just in case. So, thanks.
Okay, then I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept consent agenda item number seven.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor. Motion carries. Okay, open public forum and announcements, comments, questions. Ms. Donna Cook.
Good evening, council. My name is Donna Cook. I live in Tiverton, Rhode Island. I've been a little frustrated with the meetings, and the council does have the right to run the meetings the way they want to, but having said that, there doesn't seem to be any way to say anything when the subject is at hand. So I'd like to address you regarding your meeting style. I'm very disappointed to see you use an agenda style that is very restrictive and controlling. Allowance for the public to speak or ask questions on an agenda item is almost non-existent for expediency. Your time should be respected. I'm not advocating for long, burdensome meetings. I'm asking for you to find a balance to allow for the public to participate on issues at the meeting. Frankly, I'm sorry to say, the council meeting environment, in my opinion, seems hostile toward their constituents. I'm asking that you consider what I have brought to your attention and have a meeting that offers a more welcoming atmosphere to your constituents. Respectfully, myself.
Thank you. Barbara Pelletier, tourism.
Good evening, Barbara Pelletier. In your next packet for the next meeting, you'll find the report, the last report for the tourism in Newport, and I'd like you to pay especial attention to the figures, the tenure figures that the revenue increase in the meal tax, and you can relate that directly to when we started to get the boathouse and a couple of other restaurants. So when you do the math, I would hope that you would keep that in mind in furthering the growth of anything like restaurants or hotels in the town, because it can make a huge impact, and that impact, even you will see, can relate into, I don't know, trucks for the Public Works Department, the P.A. system, although we sound better today. Do we? Have we had that fixed? But we do sound better, and we could get a new P.A. system. But my point is that every little bit helps, and it does relate into and translate into revenue for the town, so we should keep that in mind, and especially also maybe straighten out our bed and breakfast to see what we have, and then facilitate it in being advertised so that we can get people in. And as I've read in somewhere, that Tiverton is one of the high priority towns now, real estate-wise, and judging by some, what we're selling some of these properties for, it stands to reason that the people coming in have enough money to spend on both meals and potential hotel rooms, so I think we should hook into that line of thinking and make the best of it while we still can. And the other thing that I hope somebody will look into the fact is that Fall River is going to send a ferry down to Newport, so wouldn't it be nice to revive the old concept where the ferry used to stop at the Stone Bridge and let people off? And it could be a great excursion point for tourists or anybody, just a fun thing for even locals, take your kids on a ferry ride from Fall River through Tiverton down to Newport or something like that. So I think we should be always cognizant of these opportunities that present themselves and make hay while the sun shine. Thank you.
Thank you. Non-advertised license. Xinwen Zhang, China Sea Restaurant, Five Main Road, request approval of vitroling license, subject to meeting all legal requirements. If you'd like to come forward.
You can sit right there if you like. You can come with him.
Welcome.
Hi. I'm this new Chinese restaurant, China Sea, for Takeout restaurant.
Okay.
So I don't speak English.
That's quite all. Okay.
They have met all obligations with the Tiverton Fire Department, and we recommend approval of that.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, welcome. It's nice to have a new restaurant in town, and I will entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the vitroling license, subject to meeting all legal requirements for the China Sea Restaurant, Five Main Road, Tiverton.
Second.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor. Motion carries. Congratulations, welcome to town. Good luck. Town Administrator, approval amendment to extend original agreement with Stone Bridge -- oh, I'm sorry, unfinished business. Heidi Swist, authorization to hold motorcycle run to honor a dear friend on Sunday, October 6th, from 9:30 a.m. to till noon, beginning at Stafford Road, table from 8:13. Heidi Swist here? Swist?
I believe she was here at the last meeting. I wasn't present, but she was here at the last meeting, and Counselor Roderick asked that it be continued to this meeting, so she was present for that.
Mr. President, could I just point out something, though? Is the event happening at the boat ramp at Stafford Pond?
The reason that this was not on the last agenda was because I do not have any information. Generally, I receive all this information. I did not have it. All I had was an email asking for it, and that's not usually the procedure, but she was here and presented it, so we said we'd continue.
The only, the reason why I ask is it might be in their best interest to contact the D.E.M.
They were told that, but there's a couple of people that call them. I don't know how it's organized. No one has come into my office to speak to me, but I have received a couple of emails from two different people, and I believe one of them, I responded back that you should also notify D.E.M., but I've never been in their personal appearance, so I don't really know.
Chief? Has anyone contacted you regarding a motorcycle run through town?
This whole event seems to be growing by leaps and bounds in a whole different direction. Back in the beginning of June, I was contacted by Ms. Swist stating that they were looking to do a motorcycle run to the boat ramp to honor Michael Trafficanti, and they would like to also include a Tiverton firefighter in it. I basically said, "Well, you don't need to go through me. It's not, I don't give approval to it or not. You can do what you want to, but there are certain people you have to talk to," one of them being the council. I left on vacation. She contacted the acting chief, Captain Reimels, at the time. He guided her, brought her down to Mrs. Mellow, and they put the documentation together. I believe they've spoken to the police chief also on this, and I believe they have been speaking with D.E.M., but we've had no further contact with them other than that. The only other thing that they had asked was if we could contact the family of the Tiverton firefighter to see if they wanted to, and we relayed the wishes of that family back to them, so this is something they're doing on their own. I know more about it than that.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I did speak to the chief today just to check in on this, and he does not, although he knows, it seems like, what you know, he doesn't have specifics in terms of routes or whether or not it's going to require a permit, whether they're going to get intersections closed, things like that. He doesn't have any specifics at this time.
My suggestion would be, if the council agrees, is to ask the town clerk to contact Ms. Swist and have her come before the council at our next meeting. We have no real information, and we don't know whether or not, and I know it's scheduled for October 6th, so.
It's less than a month now.
Yeah, time is of essence here. So I will entertain a motion to table this until our next meeting. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to table this to our next scheduled meeting. All those in favor. Town Administrator, approval of amendment to extend original agreement with Stone Bridge Water District for proposed soccer complex land.
The town had an agreement, it was still over two years ago, with the Stone Bridge Fire District for the donation of some acreage north of the new, or in front of the new Ranger School. Thank you, Ranger School. And that agreement has expired, and the Recreation Committee has gone before the Water District again to extend the agreement. Mr. Gudero was present at that meeting, and my understanding is that the board of the Stone Bridge Water District unanimously approved the extension of the agreement into 2015. So what this is, is this is the formal legal document that, should the council approve, we will be able to extend that agreement.
Did I miss anything, John?
You've got it covered.
Thank you.
They're all for this project to move forward. They just want us to stick to the agreement. They want us to have the funds in place. The only thing they don't want is us to go in there and start piecemealing this thing together over a number of years and having an open lot with just the trees cut, nothing else done. They want us to have the plan laid out as agreed to, stick to that plan, get the funds in place. They're all for this project. They gave us an extension of two years. If you approve that, the town administrator can send it along to them, and they'd be more than happy to sign it. The only reason they didn't want to go more than two years, because we explained to them that, you know, you never know with a project this large how long it's going to take, but they want to give future boards an opportunity not to be stuck with their decision. So they gladly gave us two years, and all they asked is that we keep them abreast, and the Recreation Commission will do that.
Okay.
So they're all for this project to move forward.
Okay, thank you. Has legal looked at this?
Yes.
Yes.
And there's no risk to the town. I think it was accurately put that it's just an extension to keep control of the project and not extend it out, but it's not as if, if it doesn't work out somehow, the town is then liable or responsible for going in.
Mrs. Black?
Yes. Sally Black, for a view drive. There was a motion made on August 13th at the school committee to tie in, to let the recreation tie into our new septic, and the vote was five to zero. And that, again, doesn't tie future school committees, but we voted, and then they wouldn't go against it. The only thing they'd have to get D.E.M. approval, but we did support that because it's all part of the whole thing.
Great, thank you so much. Anything from the council? No? If not, then I will entertain a motion.
I will make a motion that we approve the amendment to extend the original agreement with the Stone Bridge Water District for the proposed soccer complex land.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor. Motion carries. Jim, do you need me to sign this one, or you will provide?
No, I'll provide you with an original.
Okay, thank you. This is going to be a great night.
Yeah.
DPW Director Steve Malucci requests approval of bid award of purchase of Mack truck to Ballad Mack S&amp;S of Johnston, Rhode Island for $193,500. Dollars.
Dollars and cents. Good evening. I forwarded a correspondence to town administrator dated September 3rd, analyzing the four bids that we got that were opened on October 22nd.
August 3rd.
Was for a freight liner, 108 SD, at $163,956. That particular truck was very much underpowered, and even the salesman said that when he put the bid in, so it was a lesser grade, much smaller truck. Also, he put in a bid for a freight liner. It didn't have the cab that we required in the bid, and Rescue III, I guess, has the same type of engine that's being proposed, and our mechanic's not quite happy with it, the service, the turnaround, the parts getting hard, so he wasn't, he wouldn't recommend that based on that also. The third bid was an international. It was for $186,880. That didn't meet the rear axle requirement, weight requirement, so we're recommending the purchase of the Mack for $193,500. It's $6,600 over the second highest bidder, and we've had great luck with Mack. Obviously, we keep our trucks for a long time, and this is a 25-year truck, so that's why we're kind of recommending it.
Is this within the budget?
Yes, it is.
How soon would you have the truck?
Four months.
That's a good guess.
Not only we have to have the truck made to specifications, and it comes in the body and the plow and the sander, and that's a whole nother operation at a different facility, and so they have to put the, and then we have the lights and getting it painted with our insignia and everything, so it's a process.
Okay.
But it should be here, hopefully, before snow.
Probably just jinxed us.
Oh, Christ, I guess.
Unless we have snow in December.
Let's get that Halloween snowstorm. Maybe I'm just reading this wrong. I don't see the bid from J.C. Madigan, though.
Madigan is going to, was the supplier for all that stuff I just mentioned. It's included in the Mack bid. The Madigan bid supplies the sander, the plows, the lights, so it's all included in that total bid.
Okay.
But he's like a supplier, a bidder, I guess.
Okay. And he obviously would be the subbid, he was the subbidder in all of them?
Well, it's not even a subbid. It's whoever we want the truck to, they'd bring Madigan in to supply all that, the accessories and equipment that goes on it.
Okay. All right. Any questions from the council? No, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to award the purchase bid to Ballad Mack for a Mack truck for the purchase price of $193,500. Second.
Okay, before I call for, I just have a thing. This is over years, right, Jim?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, over how many years?
Five years.
Over five years. Would you just add that?
No, not over. I think it is five years.
Oh, that's fair. Payment over five years.
Payment over five years.
Yeah. Just add that to your motion.
Amending the motion to include that the payment will be made over a five-year period of time.
Will you do your second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor.
Thank you so much.
And my street gets plowed first.
Thank you so much.
Town Administrator, items and announcements.
On Saturday, September 21st, at the DPW, there will be a hazardous waste drop-off. Anyone interested would have to call 401-942-1430, extension 241, for an appointment. Let me repeat the number. 401-942-1430, extension 241.
Jim, is this one of the EcoDepots through Rhode Island Resource Recovery?
I believe so.
Okay. Is that going to be advertised, Jim, also?
Are we going to advertise it, Steve? We should.
It has to be advertised, yeah.
Okay, and we'll also put it on the website.
I think it's on the website already.
There we go, it's ahead of me. September 24th, at 10 a.m., there's going to be a ceremony at Resource Recovery where we will be receiving recycling checks from them. They don't tell us in advance what the amounts are. We find out when we get there, and when we find out, I'll send you an email. Spectrum Gas. I had announced a month or two ago that they were going to extend their lines in South Tiverton into Little Compton. They have since decided not to extend any of the lines. Another announcement, and the last one. There's going to be a major construction project on the east side of the Bragger Bridge, although it really doesn't have anything to do with us, okay? Our citizens will be affected by the rerouting, the traffic, so on and so forth. Essentially, what they're going to do is they're going to try to eliminate that maze of ramps in the Fall River area, where they're going over each other in different directions, and they're coming apart, and so on and so forth. So the groundbreaking is going to be this Friday at 1 a.m., I'm sorry, 1 p.m., at the Heritage Park. It's a $197 million project, and it's expected to take three and a half years, and it will eliminate, as I say, many of the ramps, but meanwhile, the traffic is going to be severely impacted, but once the project is done, it'll be a nice flow. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Council announcements, comments, and questions.
Mr. President, I just had a quick kind of comic question. I was going through some old notes from previous meetings and was reacquainting myself with the comprehensive plan schedule that Ms. Micho had put together, and I noted that per that schedule, we were slated to bring before the council a vote on the Comprehensive Plan Committee. Now, I guess my question is, do we have enough people who have submitted to be on that committee for the council to hold a vote at the next council meeting so that we can try to keep that to schedule?
I think we have too many.
We do, we have too many.
So Mr. Tights is, he's actually working on bringing the policy, the plan for the committee back to the council, so he's not here this evening, but we have talked about it.
Can we get that on the next agenda?
Certainly.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Yep. I have, the Tiverton Arts Council is hosting an arts reception on September 22nd here at the town hall from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. It's featuring the artist Nancy Driggs, and her medium is photography. So come in and join us for our little reception and get to meet the artist and have a nice afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Town Solicitor.
Okay.
Use your mic.
Sorry.
Thank you. I'm usually told that to use the mic, so I might get a chance to say that.
First item is a memo regarding the earth removal quarry license, and I understand that there have been certain complaints regarding blasting. Just as a matter of update, there is one entity that is currently doing some blasting that is not recognized as having this as a conforming use, or, let me just step back, it's not a conforming use anywhere. It would have to be grandfathered in here in Tiverton. And that, the first entity is Site Ready, LAL. That is an entity that's currently in litigation with the town over that and other zoning issues. As part of that litigation, in an effort to get them to cease the recycling portion of their operation, we agreed that if they would cease that operation for the pendency of the litigation, we would not seek to have them cease the other aspects, including the quarrying of their operation, also during the pendency of the litigation. So that is an entity that really has to stay status quo right now. That said, if there are complaints with respect to the noise, blast, or anything, those go to the fire, the state fire marshal's office. Now, with respect to other operations in town, there is a licensing procedure that's in place, and the forms are in the process of being finalized. It simply is something that was not moved forward recently because there were no quarrying operations that were operating. There were two, I believe, that were receivership. One has now come out, so that's now going to get back into the pipeline, and there is a form being prepared so that that will be able to be finalized by the licensing deadline, which is at the end of November. So that's moving forward. The other item, does anyone have any questions with respect to that? Okay. The other item is this foreclosed and vacant properties ordinance that is here to be put on for a public hearing. And basically, what this is about is just keeping track of who the owners are, making sure that they are keeping these vacant properties maintained and safe, et cetera. And that's, there's a copy of that ordinance in there.
Is this a new ordinance, or is this an existing one that's being revised?
This is a new ordinance.
New. And it applies to both commercial and residential properties?
Yes.
Okay, great.
And then I, do we have time to do the bridge? Okay, I have one other item I'm just going to add for discussion, and that is an update on the bridge toll litigation, and this most recent document that I'm passing out, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'll entertain a motion to add to the agenda under Town Solicitor and update the discussion only on litigation regarding the tolls on the Secana Bridge.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor. All those in favor? Whenever you're ready.
Okay. So this is the most recent pleading that was filed. And what it's asking the court to do is, and just to step back for a second, Tiverton right now has pending before the court a motion to intervene in this lawsuit. That's, has not been decided one way or the other yet. So Portsmouth is really leading the way on this, although we're all working together. So the town of Portsmouth filed this motion asking the court to allow it to amend the complaint, to add facts that have happened since the first complaint was filed. Most importantly, the addition of the tolls and that the tolls are implemented. And if you look at paragraphs 46, 45, 46, and 47, those are the paragraphs that were added. And you can see they just reflect items that had not happened at the time of the initial filing. It doesn't really change what we're asking the court to do or how we're proceeding. It just really updates the complaint to keep current with what the legislature, the governor, and now the state is doing with respect to the tolling.
Do we have any idea when they will hear our motion regarding our?
No. I don't, we don't, it's not scheduled yet. I would expect it to be scheduled soon. But it's really at the discretion of the judge and his scheduling clerk. So we really are just waiting for him to decide to hear. He has not, and just, he, I would expect that he would hear some of these together, if not all of them. So, and he hasn't scheduled any of them. So I would expect within the next, at least, month, hopefully not more than that, that we'll get a scheduling order and he'll start to hear some of these.
Anything from the council? Thank you. Town clerk?
I just have want a reminder that there is a workshop with, combined with the Budget Committee and the School Committee on Thursday at the Tiverton High School library. And it begins at 6:30. I know that's difficult for some, but I did. That's what the council agreed to last meeting.
Good thing I live near the high school.
And just for note, there is a Patriots game that night.
Is there any, I think, is this a five-week month?
We have a workshop on September 30th.
Yes.
At the next council meeting, I'll give you the agenda for that. You did get the agenda. And you also had on the top of your packets, that's your backup for the financial statements that Jim appeared in?
Okay. I will entertain a motion. Mr. Lambert?
I move that we go into closed executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law, 42, Chapter 42, Section 46, 5A, 5, Ray Acquisition of Real Property for Public Purposes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
And continuing closed executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law, Chapter 42, Section 46, 5A, 1, Ray Personnel Performance. James Goncalo.
Second.
Okay. Just a note, notice has been given?
Yes. For the record, Mr. Goncalo has received notice and persisted in executive session.
Okay. We'll, motion and second. All those in favor? Okay.